I'd like to turn over the meeting to Ms. Primelli for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. As always, I'd like to begin with our high school student representatives for the Board of Education. So this evening, I would like to call Brooklyn up from Liberty First.
Thank you Superintendent Primelli, Board of Ed members and guests. December has been a great month so far at Liberty for both the students and staff. It began with an amazing way to bring back indoor performances with a live audience for the very first time after a long 20 months at our very own JTV Home for the Holidays. It was a night of singing, dancing, and fun. It was a great way to start off the holiday spirit. The next JTV event, Holiday Spectacular, will be held on Thursday, December 23rd. It will be streamed live on the Jackson Television YouTube channel and will be streaming throughout the school day. This is a great way to show the creative holiday-themed videos the Digital Media Academy students have made this month. The next live performance coming up is tomorrow night with the Liberty Choral Concert, then the Liberty Band Winter Concert on the 22nd, and the Little Mermaid, which will be February 24th, 25th, and 26th. The outlet players have already started rehearsing and are very excited to perform in front of an audience again. This month has been filled with different fundraisers held by different clubs and classes. There have been numerous bake sales, including our Nations Among Nations Diversity Club, which successfully came to an end after school let out today, and the National Honor Society one will be tomorrow, Friday, and Monday at the end of the day. Tomorrow, the class of 2023 will be having a fundraiser at Surf Taco from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., where 25% of your bill will go directly to them. The Drama Club is hosting a Gingerbread House contest with a $5 entry fee. The winner will get their house in the show. Texas Roadhouse will also be supporting the Drama Club on Tuesday, December 21st, from 4:00 to 10:00, where 10% of the proceeds will go to the club. The Liberty Holiday Giving Event provided needed items and gifts to 13 teenagers and one family. There are also holiday pajama drives and pet item drives wrapping up next week. The band had their eighth annual vendor and craft fair in the gym, which included great food, clothes, crafts, et cetera. It included raffles, Mega 50/50, and was very successful. We are ending off our final two weeks before winter break with Fun Holiday Spirit Weeks. This started on Monday and ends on the last day before break. It is a great way for students and staff to show off their holiday wear and spirit. Speaking of break, I hope you all have a great holiday and have a very happy and healthy New Year. Thank you, and I am looking forward to coming back in January and updating you on how the start of 2022 is going for Jackson Liberty.
Thank you so much, Brooklyn. Very informative as always, and lots of happenings going on there at Liberty. Dakota, could you come, please, and give us an update for Memorial?
Good evening, Board of Ed members, Superintendent Primelli, and those in the audience. Since I've last addressed you, the school year has come at its full swing, but we've managed to succeed in multiple endeavors. The foremost achievement, I think, is the early success our seniors have found with their college applications, as early decision, early action responses have begun to roll in. While many regular decision deadlines aren't until January, it's easy to forget that for many students, this is the most stressful time of the year. And with that in mind, I'd just like to say that we couldn't be more proud of our Jaguars wherever they may go. In club news, the FPLA completed its March of Dimes fundraiser, raising funds for premature children with the backing of many enthusiastic supporters. The NHS ran a successful Adopt a Family event. The Interact Club ran a gift drive for local animal shelters, and the ROTC is currently overseeing its annual toy drive to help ensure that disadvantaged families in Ocean County have a proper holiday season. Our school play, Puffs, a python-esque retelling of a certain boy wizard at a certain school of magic, to all the drama kids watching, I hope I got that very exact description correct, tells a story through the eyes of another people at Hogwarts, and it ran three shows, one of which I attended, and I'm proud to report that everything, from the acting to the effects, succeeded in translating the playwright's vision onto the stage. In much the same vein, students from JMHS took to the stage last month for Broadway Night to show off their vocal talents from certain Broadway musicals from the past and present, including Disney musicals and Hamilton. Finally, from the club side, JMHS Deck has been fundraising for the Cookies for Kids Cancer Organization, selling four dog treats for $2 a package in the name of childhood cancer research. In our sporting events, we held the traditional Powderpuff Game in November, which the juniors won in a 27-0 rout behind a dynamic passing attack. The girls' basketball team is 3-0 in preseason play, added by strong offensive play by Zoe Mathie. The hockey team has also gotten strong results, winning twice, pardon me, and tying once to begin a season of high expectations. The girls' and boys' swim teams are both coming off victories on Monday, and Coach Newman has expressed excitement about our team's strong improvements. The wrestling team plans on opening competition this Saturday, as varsity competes at Southern Regional High School, and the JV team will host a 12-team tournament at Memorial. For the winter track, Coach The Bold wanted me to express how thrilled the team is to once again have a full season, especially one that includes running in the warm confines of the bubble instead of the Arctic so-called polar bear meets we held here last year. On the girls' side, Coach Augustin is very happy with the growth of the team and looks forward to our first meet, or to their first meet, rather, which is coming Tuesday. Student government has organized two Holiday Spirit Weeks in the lead-up to the winter break, the first of which began on Monday with our Holiday Pajama Day. Today, we had Holiday Card Day, where students and staff are encouraged to form groups of identical dress and take pictures behind the mock picture frame that stands suspended just outside this auditorium. Tomorrow is Christmas in July, a day in which we encourage all students to dress in Hawaiian shirts and summer clothes to celebrate the idea of a less frosty holiday season. I would like to once again thank you all for having me here. It's an honor to address this body, and I look forward to doing so again next month. Happy holidays and happy New Year to you all.
Thank you, Dakota. Very informative as well, and, boy, lots of activities, lots of things happening in our high schools. It's very impressive, and I wish you both very happy holidays as well. Thank you for being here tonight. So I'm going to move on with the rest of my report. Mr. Ratante and I will get to the presentation in a few moments that we have this evening, but I have a few things first before we get there. First of all, importantly, our hearts, thoughts, and prayers are with the community of Oxford, Michigan, and the families affected by the tragic school shooting. In Jackson schools, we have extensive protocols and procedures in place for threat assessments. We have trained for years with the ALICE approach along with our SRO officers and our security. However, in times like these, we revisit and review procedures. After this tragedy, we, as an administrative team, security, SRO officers, reviewed our policies, procedures for threat assessment. We revisited our goals and actions for engaging students in school and supporting struggling students. We have in the past and will continue to take student safety very seriously. Last week, we sent a communication to our families in regards to safety in school and on the Internet. We know our students are dealing with the effects of the pandemic, and we must all work together to ensure our students feel safe and that there is a trusted adult that they can turn to. Social media is a big concern. We continue to speak in school and remind students about appropriate use and the cautions of posting and sharing and other things on social media. We all need to continue to have these conversations with our students, and I just, again, emphasize that with our families. It has to be a combined effort here. Moving on, additionally, our hearts go out to the communities of Illinois, Kentucky, and Tennessee affected by the catastrophic tornadoes. It's a strong reminder to us to let the ones that we love know that they are loved. On another note, this week, our students who were required to take the NJ Smart Learning Assessment for the Fall Block have been testing this week. Additionally, the individual student reports from the Start Strong Assessment students took earlier in the year have been received by the district. So, parents, please look for communication next week. These reports will be coming home. Ask your students for those reports. They're coming home in backpacks. If you do not see one, please contact your child's school. To the board members, we provided you an update on the status of our goals and where we're at. So if there are any questions, I'm going to pause here if there's any questions on any of the goals update. Seeing none, I will move on. Additionally, I don't believe this is any new information for our public or our board, but the district is dealing and struggling in some areas in regards to the nationwide driver shortage for our school bus drivers. We are every day working hard to make sure our regular routes are covered. I'm sure you have experienced some late buses, you know, double backs, where we have to go back and pick students up and try and get them to or from school. We're trying to keep all of our athletics up and running and transportation there. It is definitely a day-by-day challenge, and I just want to reiterate that. We are doing our best to not have it affect any programming, but it is difficult every single day. Along those same lines, I'm sure you've seen it in the media, we are also struggling with substitute coverage. Very few substitutes are available. Even filling teaching positions is difficult right now, especially in some of the specialized certification areas like Spanish, Family Consumer Science, science, and math. We are experiencing a shortage across the board. I say all that to make the public aware and the board aware that I really want to thank our staff and our administrative team for their commitment to keeping our schools open right now. We have teachers doing extra coverage on a daily basis, administrators in classrooms teaching daily because we do not have enough substitutes. We are averaging 100 uncovered positions every day. It is very difficult, and we are fighting to keep our classrooms open and our schools open without substitutes. We are committed to keeping our schools open, but I did want to take a moment to thank our staff. They are working overtime, our administrators as well, and we are hopeful that we will continue to recruit and find some substitutes along the way in teaching positions. We have been fortunate enough to scoop up a lot of December graduates for January to cover some of our holes, so we are hopeful and thankful for that, so that in January, we will be covered in some of our vacancies of our regular teaching positions. So moving on, also tonight, we recognize there are people here this evening to articulate their concerns and continued frustration at the mask mandate, quarantines, and concerns over possible mandates for vaccines for children. On Monday, the administration building opened the doors to a silent protest on these topics by demonstration of shoes being left, some with notes signifying the students who would be pulled from the district if a vaccine mandate was to be implemented. The district has not implemented requirements for student vaccines, and this is not something we would mandate. That concern of mandated vaccines needs to be addressed at the State Health Department and the Governor's Office. As I have mentioned before, we hear people and we understand the frustrations. We are working here in Jackson to create a balance. We need to keep in mind all perspectives and ensure the safety of all. I understand that Middletown has revised their quarantine requirements for students. I have read them. We too feel that quarantine guidelines are extensive. However, we are not health professionals. We are educators. We need to ensure the district is not liable for anything, and we are striving to keep our schools open. We have advocated to the Health Department, most recently, about changing the quarantine guidelines. We would like to see a test-to-return option. In regards to masks, again, we are required to follow the executive order, and the executive order does not violate a HIB law. There have also been community members indicating that we have not been transparent. We have been nothing but transparent from the beginning. Boards of education and superintendents have been placed in the middle of these issues. I emphasize again, for anyone who is unhappy with the executive order or the health guidelines, to please go to the source of those guidelines. We in the district are working to educate and support students, expand programs and opportunities for students under these difficult times. As I have said before, we certainly will listen, reflect, and we will continue to do that. I just ask in our comments that we're respectful. Moving on, this is the last meeting for many of our board members. I wanted to take a few moments to thank you for your time, work, and dedication to the students of Jackson. Mr. Herman, who is in the audience tonight, I want to thank you publicly for your insight and your investment and time in this district this last year, and all of your hard work on the subcommittees. Thank you. Mr. Spalto, I'd like to thank you for your time, your expertise, and your commitment to this district in this past year. Mr. Acevedo, a longtime resident and a board member for 20 years, when you calculate all of the times you have served on the board, that shows a tremendous commitment to the students and the community here in Jackson. Thank you for that, Mr. Acevedo. You hold tremendous history in this district, and we appreciate that history and your insight. Mr. Burnettsky, you've served six years as a board member. You're a huge supporter of our music program. We thank you for that, and dedicated to the community, dedicated to our students, and we thank you for all your insight and hard work as well. I want to thank you all for your time, hard work, effort for this community and our students. Moving to the presentation now. Tonight, Mr. Ratante and I, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, will provide an update on the Safe Return Plan and an overview of a plan for spending our ARP money in the Jackson School District. So there we go. Board members know it's behind you. So tonight, the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARP, we will present an overview of how the intention of spending that money, as well as a quick update to our Safe Return Plan. So planning for the ARP budget, there's many factors to consider. We took input from our teachers, administrators, our DIAC Committee, which is made up of both administrators, a board member, and teachers, the association, the parent-teacher organizations, and, as the community knows, we surveyed parents in the community as well. And we took all of that information and compiled it to make some of these decisions in regards to how to best spend this money. Recognizing that we have lots of needs in this district, I want to remind the board and the public that we have massive holes from the years of tremendous millions of dollars of cuts that this district have had to experience. We've let go a tremendous amount of staff. Our programming has not expanded. It's stayed intact. We worked hard to stay intact, but we didn't expand. And as you can see by the slides, we are set again for this new budget year coming up for '22-'23 to be cut another $4.2 million in state aid. So we needed to keep that in mind to ensure that we are able to keep our programs intact, expand our programs, but keep in mind we are still having to cut in upcoming budget. So it's creating a balance to make sure that we can not have to cut any deeper, obviously. And this money certainly is going to help us not have to cut deeper, but unfortunately, S2 is still in place. So with an update to our Safe Return Plan, you will see that we are offering before-and-after-school programs. These are updates to programs now in the district. We'll be also offering more enrichment programs this year and moving forward. We are going to be offering more interest-based and activities that students enjoy programs, things that they can do like esports and fishing and clubs and intermurals. We're looking forward to putting that into place as well for our students, really creating an excitement for coming to school and experiencing student engagement. We will be doing a lot of staff training. It will be ongoing in all of our areas of math and literacy, student engagement, and English language learner instructions. Our intervention teachers and new teachers hired will reduce class sizes. We are looking to hire intervention teachers who will be able to push in and make class sizes a little bit smaller right now. As you know, they are relatively high in some areas, and also continue to maintain our healthy schools and facilities with this money. Breakfast and lunch will continue to be provided for all students, and we will continue to keep this plan open. It is an open document, a fluid document, that will be revised based on feedback and communication that comes from our State Department of Education. Also, updated to our Safe Return Plan are examples of staff training that we will be doing and have been doing. Math intervention strategies. We know that math is one of the hardest-hit areas through the pandemic, so we're doing a lot of work around how to support students and accelerate that learning. Foundations intervention training, which is an early literacy phonics instruction based program. We're working on behavior de-escalation and helping students manage, self-regulate. We'll be working on crisis prevention training, anti-bullying, substance abuse, all of the areas around mental health, and, again, more academic support training and programs. We have district leaders, teacher leaders in this district, and this funding will be able to continue that. Otherwise, it would have been cut through our S2 cuts, and these teacher leaders will help provide some support for our teachers on engaging students in school, strategies related to that, our math and literacy strategies, and early literacy intervention. Finally, the Safe Return Update. Our plan is being revised, again, to express everything that's been in it all along, and that we will be increasing programming and staffed professional development. And as I mentioned in my report earlier, the district has also advocated to the Health Department to review their guidelines for quarantine and consider shortening the time and allowing for a faster return of students, and we will continue to advocate for that. You'll see here on this slide the facility improvements that we are looking to do with this money. We will be covering any projects that were not covered through the ESIP Energy Savings Improvement Plan, some rooftop units in some of our schools to help with more energy efficient units, bringing in more fresh air into our buildings, improving some of the heat controls that gets. We have some classrooms that get super hot or super cold, so we'll be addressing that through this. Also, some hot water units that gets to help ease the burden of our boilers to avoid the wear and tear on those, doing some upgrading to some of our bathrooms in some of our buildings that are very old, and upgrading our locker rooms as well, particularly at Memorial here. The high school locker rooms have not been upgraded for a while, and upgrading other facilities that we see that are in need. So some of the money is set aside for that as well. So over these S2 cuts that we've had, our school budgets have taken a tremendous cut. They really have been bare bones for the last few years, which really scales back on supplies that our teachers need and our students need. So over the period of time, remember, this money is spent over several years, we will be helping our schools by providing more money in their budgets closer to where they used to be before S2 cuts, so that they can purchase some of those materials that are needed in the classroom, like calculators, upgrade some of our science lab materials, putting more literacy books into our classroom libraries and things like that. And when you look at that across the amount of time of that money, it's about $183 per student if you're looking at it that way. But mostly, what I think is important is that we're, again, now refunding our school budgets that really needed to be refunded to allow for some updates to some materials. So with the ARP money, and I say that clearly because we do have also some other areas in which we will be looking to increase staff in our district, but just not through the ARP money. This list you see here is some of the staff that we have begun to put into place and will continue to put into place. As I mentioned before, some intervention teachers in the classroom to lower class sizes, some teachers' second semester at the high school to lower class sizes in some of our higher areas, additional guidance counselor, additional nurse, an additional BCBA, somebody to work with our teachers to help with strategies with students who are struggling with behaviors, additional computer technician. Our district is very large, and we are very understaffed when it comes to technicians. You think about the size of this district and the fact that we run so much technology, we really need that support. It really has become the backbone. Some custodians that we were, again, had cut from previous years due to S2 cuts, the teacher leader initiative I explained earlier, and, again, this money will also cover some of the professional development that I mentioned earlier. I'm going to transition to Mr. Ratante now, who is going to review some of the programs we're looking to implement.
Thank you, Ms. Primelli. One of the key factors also, you know, that Mrs. Primelli mentioned is, you know, this grant runs for the next several years. It runs into the fall of 2024. So, you know, a lot of the areas, we know our needs now. We know things that need to really be addressed, and we want to make sure we do that, but we also have to have an eye on the future. You know, we don't really know exactly what the '23-'24 school year is going to bring at this point, so we tried to do our best, you know, planning all of that in as we went through this. So one of the key areas, obviously, is programs for students and our families. That's the most important thing that we do. In addition to programs that we currently have in place, our family nights, a lot of our before-and-after-school programs that we run, ARP funds are also going to be used to provide additional programs for our students and our families. We're currently running an after-school tutoring and instruction program now at both middle schools and both high schools. We have teacher mentors now on the high school level that are working with our at-risk students and helping them with their connections to their schools and connections to their academic work. Obviously, we want to make sure all of our students graduate. With all of the changes that have happened with state testing over the last couple of years, we have a large number of seniors that never had the opportunity to meet the assessment graduation requirement through state testing because it wasn't available when they were sophomores and juniors. So we're working with those students on portfolios to make sure that all of our seniors can graduate. And some other programs that you see up there, including guidance counselors in our schools for the summer, One Book One School programs in the elementary school, and additional counseling for students through our YMCA program. In addition to, we're looking at our summer programs for the next several summers. We think it's important to have opportunities available for our students throughout the summer. We did run some enrichment programs last year that had a tremendous amount of success and interest, and we were also able to provide course recovery and credit recovery classes for our middle and high school students. Typically, these programs would be at a fee, several hundred dollars for some of these programs. A lot of times, they're not even available in district, so to have these programs in place for the next several summers is something that, you know, we hope many of our students will be able to take advantage of, whether it's the enrichment or, hopefully, many won't need it, but if they do need the credit recovery programs, they'll be available as well for our students. One of the key things, obviously, is our technology, you know, the infrastructure in this district. So some of the investments that we're making for the next couple of years involve, obviously, our Chromebooks that we use every day with all of our students. There's also several programs, including our Linkit program. That's kind of our data warehouse. That really allows all of our teachers to see all of their students and know exactly where our students are ability-wise and really make proper educational plans for our students, and that's done through programs such as iXL, which provides really individual learning and individual assessment, individual support programs for our kids in math and literacy. Our Apex program provides online instruction for students that we will use from time to time, whether it's through our summer programs or just certain programs and courses that we don't, you know, we're not able to offer that are available to our students. And our Promethean boards, we've really made a very, very strong push over the last 10 years to have our Promethean boards, which are interactive learning panels in every classroom, and just the wear and tear that these boards take, you know, some of them now over 10 years old. We just want to make sure that we can maintain repairing or replacing any of them as needed. The next slide shows our, this is our technology lease purchase. This is something that's in our budget on a yearly basis. This is a fee that, or a cost that our district incurs that really helps make sure everything runs. You know, think of, you know, the cost that you pay just to have Internet in your home, and then multiply that times a district the size of Jackson. So, you know, things like Internet connectivity, our routers, our cabling, you know, tech supplies that we need to make things run, and most importantly, you know, we're providing every single child in this district with a new Chromebook. Those Chromebooks, over several years, you know, take a lot of wear and tear, as well as just simply getting older and outdated and need to be replaced. So this lease purchase for the next three years really allows us to maintain our tech infrastructure, and most importantly, this is money now that can come out of our district budget to help with the S2 cuts that are coming and prevent, you know, cuts of teachers and things like that. So it's a real positive way to use our ARP funds, yet still have space in our district available for the important things like teachers that we need moving forward. available for the important things like teachers that we need moving forward. And the last item I have up here is just new curriculum and materials. Our elementary math curriculum, you know, one of the things that we've definitely learned the most through this past year and a half is math is an area where we have seen really the largest gap or struggle in students. So it's really important that we have, you know, a strong math program to help sure we maintain, especially on the elementary grades, strong math skills which will build the foundations as these kids go into middle school and high school. The current program that we're using actually is, has a lot of online features, our everyday math program, I'm sorry, our Envision Math Program. And that program does come up, that six-year subscription does end, so we're at a period where we do need to renew that program and looking at a new program to make sure we're still maintaining a lot of online features that kids can use their Chromebooks for and have a lot of digital learning as well as instructional learning. And our science curriculum as well, we're looking at K-12, you know, we're transitioning into next-generation science standards that really do have a lot of hands-on, a lot of student engagement, a lot of engineering principles. It's kind of a very different way of teaching science, you know, than the more traditional, just simply memorizing the periodic table or things of that nature. So we're really making an investment with our science curriculum to make sure that our kids are truly engaged in a meaningful science program.
Thank you, Mr. Rotante. So in closing, as I mentioned earlier, due to the S2 cuts that we've endured over the last few years, the district has lost millions of dollars in funding. We will still see the significant cut again this year, and when S2 is all complete, we are looking at a $7 million loss over seven years. So this ARP money is certainly going to help us sustain, not have to let go teachers, and for the first time in a few years, I'm able to say expand our programming. So we are happy for that, and certainly we'll continue to inform the board and the public as we move forward with these initiatives. So with that, I ask the board if there are any questions.
I have one.
Yes.
In the back room, I mentioned that years ago, we had, this board had a committee made up of students, teachers, parents, psychologists. There was a peer mediation and remediation. The students sat in chairs, they brought up problems, whether it be race, gender, personality problems, where they were afraid or where they were angry, and they discussed, they talked it out. Now it suggests that out of this money, we formalize, go back and research, formalize a group where you have a staff member who is mediator, but lets the student, let it be a student-run situation where we can get ahead of any problems we might have when it comes to personal, social, media problems or whatever, where people can talk it out before they fight it out or before they pollute the district. Also, I wonder if we could also formalize our, a forum, maybe a multiple-day forum for parents to be instructed and to be informed, to be exposed to the computers, to the tablets, the equipment that the kids are using, that the students are using, because these parents very often could be our allies if they knew that they could help, that they could be part of the army that makes the school district better. So I'm proposing that we have a two- or three-day benefit the schedules of the work schedule of the parents, where they could come in and have discussions about what equipment we're using, how it's used, why it's used, why don't we have this, why do we have that, and why we have some things more than others. And also, I will, I wrote it down here. Do more programs that involve parents. More parents should come to the district and be introduced to the district as if they've never met it before, because basically we have an ally in the parent that we're not using 100%. And by the way, I want to say that today's technology, today's sound sensor is much better. Nicole, you sounded perfect. It's the first time I've been able to understand you. Whatever they did upstairs, they keep, if they keep doing it, this is the way you should sound. Thank you very much.
Am I on? Yes, I agree. It's for the sound. It was certainly much improved today, so thank you, everyone. So Mr. Acevedo, I just wanted to respond to that just quickly, is we do have in our board goals and our district goals this year, peer-to-peer program goal, so certainly we will take those things that you have just mentioned, your ideas, into consideration as we work on the peer-to-peer initiative in the district. And certainly, we will certainly consider more parent programs. There is actually, in the presentation tonight, we do have plans for more parent programs. That's one of the areas in which we anticipate spending the money as well, so absolutely.
We used to have homework hotlines. It's a little too hard because sometimes a kid's parent gets a fifth-grade question in science or mathematics and it's actually very difficult. So we used to have a homework work line, phone line. The thing is, I don't expect that to happen, but that's how serious we were about making sure we brought in the parent.
We definitely have some thoughts in that area as well, that instead of being a hotline now with technology, it might be a virtual offering of there's a, you know, a teacher available if you have math questions between 6:00 and 8:00 at night or something like that. So those are things we are definitely discussing and entertaining as we move forward. So thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Ms. Rivera, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Permelli. The state and county school boards' next meeting is February 22nd, virtual at 6:30. The parent group, please, on Mr. Burneski.
The meeting was canceled this month due to lack of attendance.
Special education, the next CAC meeting is February 9th. Scholarship, Mr. Walsh.
Mrs. Rivera, can I jump in on the special ed meeting? Because our special ed director gave us some information that we want to make sure we share. They held a workshop on November 1st titled "Parent Strategies for Positive Child Behavior at Home." They had 22 families that attended. That's a pretty good turnout. It was presented by Samantha Coon, Bria Graves, and Tara Klein. And then their next meeting, as you mentioned, is February 9th, and the focus of that meeting is students with disabilities transitioning to Ocean County College. And the great part about CAC right now is that CAC has a representative for every school in the district, and the CAC rep meeting will be held in early January.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, John? Pertaining to scholarships. Added to the list of concerns I had before, could we have more seniors return to give formal presentations as to what they've experienced in this new era of education in college, so that we get, our students are more aware of what a student should know in order to get into college, into a technical school, and to succeed and bypass all the problems?
It's a great idea. We actually do this in our high schools through our guidance department. We have students who return and share those types of things, and we also do a college evening for both parents and students.
I understand that, we have college evenings, but I want it to be something that's serious, that when people come, they say, "I'm glad I showed up." I'm not saying you don't do that or we don't do that. I'm just saying that we make a serious step forward, say, "When these kids come from far away to speak to us, they're going to give us the real stuff, I mean, real information."
Absolutely, we hope for, thank you.
Scholarship, Mr. Walsh.
At this time, an important date, the 20th of December, okay? Anyone who's interested in sponsoring a scholarship has to go online and fill out the application. That's kind of a soft cutoff date. We'll always take somebody's money and give it out to a senior, so that's why I call it soft, but that's the only thing going on right now.
Built-in grants, Mr. Spolzoff.
As you heard, there are some improvements hopefully coming down the way with the use of our ARP monies, but otherwise, as far as I know, things are going pretty well.
Budget and finance, Mr. Walsh.
As you can see from the presentation, the administration's putting the information together and they get into high gear to see what the budget for next year is going to be in January, and then they'll present it in February, and then we'll vote on it in March.
Transportation, Mr. Walsh.
At this present time, it's an ongoing battle for AIDS bus drivers, and we have a new leader over there, and he seems to be putting all the pieces together with a little help from the superintendent.
Thank you. Curriculum committee, Mr. Spolzoff.
Curriculum committee was put on pause a little bit because there's going to be some change in board leadership or in board members, so I think it made sense to wait until they get too deep into things to get the new members on board, no pun intended.
Thank you. Policy committee, Mr. Walsh.
Nothing at this time.
Enrollment study committee, Mr. Walsh.
We had our initial meeting, started to put out our plan of how we are going to look into the numbers as far as students, building, and all the other components which will come in under enrollment, but nothing spectacular yet, we're just getting started.
Thank you. I need a motion for approval of policy and regulations, second reading with adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spolzoff?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burneski?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the closed session meeting, November 17th, 2021, and the official board meeting, November 17th, 2021, committee of the whole business meeting.
Move them.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spolzoff?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burneski?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bills.
Move to pay the bills. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Spolzoff?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burneski?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the treasures and board secretary's reports.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spolzoff?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burneski?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for any other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second.
When your name is called by Ms. Richardson, please come to the microphone. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Ms. Richardson, please call the first person.
Nate Grosshandler, please.
That's right.
Just if I may say, we have a timer tonight. It's a colored timer, so you'll see that it'll...
I'll be under the five.
Okay, I'll just run it anyway.
My comment speaks pretty much what the presentation was on, and that's our ESAR funding that this school's been getting, those three rounds of ESAR funding, I know this is the third round. And I just ask that the board, as you go through and prioritize and timing and allocation, how you, I'm sorry, how you allocate those funds, please don't forget about our special ed students. Last year was a tough year for them. Actually, it's been a tough year for them, time for them since March of 2020. They've been significantly disproportionately impacted by that period of time. The lack of in-person education that was offered to them last year and IEPs not being met last year has put them in a difficult spot. Now, I also want to say, we're lucky enough to have a really fantastic principal, understanding superintendent, assistant superintendent, who has really helped out a lot with some of the issues that have come up for the students, those students, over last year. But we were also promised that there was going to be a lot of things put in place for this year, specifically for special ed students, to make up for what happened last year. And we haven't really seen those. We continue to kind of get what's been there and answers of this is what everyone gets. So as you go through and have these discussions as far as prioritizing time-wise and funding, please just don't forget about our special ed students. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Again, I want to say that when it gets to the yellow, you have one minute to go.
It's not fair that we have to wear the mask in school because some people think that it's hard to breathe with them and stuff, so I think we should stop the mask. Um, I've been quarantining since the 6th, and it was very hard, and I can't really hear my teacher and stuff, so, um, about like talking on it because sometimes my teachers can't hear me on the Google meets and stuff. I'd rather be in school because I feel a lot comfortable in it, because I can hear my teachers better, and I feel safer and stuff in school. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the preface on quarantine time. Since September of 2020, we've been keeping healthy kids home from school because reporting adults, their perceptions and the recommendations of the Ocean County Health Department have made, I'm sorry, have made the decisions regarding close-contact quarantine needs. We listened to last board's meeting to the results of the district-wide academic testing with grade three showing up as possibly the most academically impacted, and we swallowed down the explanation that it could be related to lack of test-taking skills. Let's be real, unless the state test was evaluating skill-level needs that were minimal in comparison to our district standards, Jackson 3rd graders' last uninterrupted learning took place at the height of their kindergarten year, where academic gains are the most important in March, April, May, and June. So it makes sense they were the most impacted. Excessive quarantine of healthy kids continues to interrupt the learning of all students and consequently has negative academic and social impacts. For over a year, we have heard that many Jackson board members and administration do not support COVID-19 mandates. We're following along, it's out of our control. However, we do have a current administrative policy, 1648, which you've revised. Section 8, the policy states that people who are vaccinated can be in close contact and not have to quarantine 14 days. The CDC states that vaccinated individuals in close contact with COVID-19 can still get sick, and therefore it's recommended that they quarantine and test five to seven days. The Ocean County Health Department, which is our guru and guiding force, avoids this discussion altogether, rather only highly encouraging vaccination for all. Additionally, the Ocean County Department of Health states that vaccinated are only getting COVID due to their contact with the unvaccinated. Additionally, the Ocean County Department of Health states that vaccinated are only getting COVID due to their contact with the unvaccinated. And it's kind of evident that maybe Jackson district is potentially, you know, we're picking the Ocean County Department of Health's side in their current language and in our policy. My point, information's all over the place from one expert to the next. It's hard for me to fathom why the school district or its employees making these close contact decisions even want to get in the middle of this debate. The facts remain, healthy kids are quarantined for fourteen days. Some kids have been quarantined more than one time, which means it could be upwards of twenty-four days out of the classroom. Some decisions are made because the kids are in lunch fifteen minutes with their masks off and we have our lunch periods at twenty to twenty-five and that five to ten-minute period, clicker goes off and now we're quarantined fourteen days. Or the fact that they're in a classroom and we're in the red, but we're all wearing masks because masks work, right? So they should be negated if they're in a close contact situation with a mask off. Our kids should not be quarantined. And let's not forget that if you had COVID three months and one day ago, you're going to be quarantined fourteen days. I get these are not your laws. And oh, but this is something we could have considered, enrollments down in Jackson buildings. And we had the opportunity with funds to move our students around, so possibly our kids were six feet apart. We don't know as a public if that was considered because it wasn't in any board agenda that I've participated in. We need to make uninterrupted policy important. I'm glad that everybody in district, that I'm in a board, we feel confident that access to remote learning and after-school programs will close the academic and social gaps and provide students with necessary instruction in the event that they miss upwards of twenty-four-plus days of in-person learning. At this rate, you guys should be considering a new calendar with two hundred and thirty-six days and maybe three times of a two-week break to make up for all the time these kids are out of the classroom. I digress. Whatever your thoughts are on the rules and the ends, one cannot deny that in most close contact quarantine cases, these are healthy people, unable under the current district policy of sixteen forty-eight, number F, to test and return, which currently the CDC supports in all cases. It's time for Jackson to be one of the leaders in the COVID education. It's time for less quarantine time of healthy students. It's time to no longer consider close contacts during lunch. The plan for the road forwards' next goal should be less uninterrupted learning in person. So obviously you already voted on any, you know, changes to sixteen forty-eight, but in the future, when you're at your policy subcommittee meeting, maybe you guys want to make more decisions. Because I urge you to make independent local decisions. And I, you know, hope that you can follow the lead of another district who's currently in the red and make a different policy for quarantining healthy kids. Employers are not doing this to their employees, but we're doing it to the kids. At what point do you even know if a kid's home alone, learning on a computer?
Mrs. Gardella, your time is up. Mr. Hamer?
Thank you. As I'm no longer on the board and I'm not bound by ethics on what I could say or not say, thank you for, Tara, for reminding me over the past year. I'd like to speak my truth. And what I've witnessed over the past year is a group of incredibly talented professionals who although COVID, I don't believe was part of any school administration training, they were able to pivot to the goings-on on the ground. They were able to change to help every single child. We have a superintendent who was, I believe, the first in the state of New Jersey after a tweet from the governor mentioning that masks may be optional at a certain point last year to rescind the mask mandate in our Jackson schools. I believe that says a lot of what the, you know, what the board's goals are. We have a assistant superintendents who put everything in for the district. We have a special education director who his goal is to make sure every, every child's needs are met. We have a board of education who has been supporting the administration over the past year through difficult times. From my experience, I have not seen them turn down the administration's request at any point over the past year. It's a board that's following their leader, Ms. Permili, and helping every child in Jackson. So I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to be part of it and I wish, I hope everyone's able to continue to go to work. Thank you.
Madam President, that's all that we have.
Make a motion, we close public forum.
Move. Second.
Seeing no one else, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a motion to move board member resignation.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spoltoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oscevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burnettsky?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move finance.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spoltoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oscevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burnettsky?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spoltoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oscevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burnettsky?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move programs.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spoltoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oscevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burnettsky?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spoltoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oscevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burnettsky?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spoltoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oscevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Burnettsky?
Abstain anything transportation-related, yes to everything else.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on any topics pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
All questions and concerns will be answered and addressed at the end of this public forum once all individuals have had the opportunity to speak. When your name is called by Ms. Richardson, please come forward to the microphone. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Ms. Richardson, please call the first name.
I can't pronounce it, but it's Nicole. I think it's O-R-Z-Y-B.
My name's Nicole Grisb and I am the mother of two elementary students here in Jackson. We've been here for five years now and I have to say that I've been very happy with the school systems and all the staff that we've come in contact with. As a teacher in another district, I have to say I was also extremely happy with how Jackson handled the shutdown in two thousand twenty and proud to be a part of a district that stayed open all of last year, in-person hybrid, because many were not. I didn't get back into my classroom until April of this year, so. But on the other hand, what's going on now in this school, this school year has definitely been taken way too far. And deep down, I have a feeling that all of you know and agree that something is just not right. The New Jersey education system is very big on equity. It preaches equity and inclusion on a daily basis. This is what the teachers are directed to teach our students. And I want you to take a look at your rules, procedures, and consequences that were put in place in this district, that were created by you, and decide if they are equitable and inclusive of everyone. Because having separate rules and consequences for vaccinated and unvaccinated staff and students is creating segregation and discrimination. Your quarantining and testing rules are not equitable at all. They're not mandated by anyone in the state and there's no executive order relating to quarantining. These are your rules that you created. You're quarantining healthy people because they're not vaccinated. They don't have to be vaccinated. There's no rule that says we have to be. And they shouldn't be punished for it and children should not be missing out on their free public education. You do not have to create and enforce these rules. This is what you chose to do. My district does not quarantine healthy close contacts because we're all in masks, distanced. No one is within three and six feet for more than fifteen minutes and therefore there are no close contacts. Like you said earlier, Middletown just voted on this rule and decided that it should be voluntary and up to the parents of the children, which is what it should be anyway. We are the parents and it should be our decisions. Or at least, the least thing that you could have been doing all this time is choosing the other recommendation from the CDC and Health Department, allowing healthy students with no symptoms to test and come back to school. But you have not chosen that, so I would like to know what exactly is it that you are doing? You say your hands are tied and that you've done all you can do, but I have not heard anything in specific of what you actually have done. I also want to address the fact that there are schools thirty minutes down the road from us with tons of happy, smiling children at the base, not wearing any masks, and that's not equitable either. How do we get our kids in that school, wearing no masks with high-end assemblies like Sesame Street coming to visit them? I mean, come on, have you brought that up to the state yet? There's your loophole. Why aren't you using it? We're asking for your help. Pennsylvania just did away with masks. Has anyone networked with anyone in Pennsylvania to find out how they did that, what worked for them? All we're hearing is that you can't do anything else. I would like you to be a little more transparent with us and explain the actions that you have taken and maybe it would be a little more settling for us and give us hope that you really are on our side. You want us to take it up with the state and the Health Department and we are. We're doing all we can with our emails and we want you to help us. And then there's this new state health curriculum that I believe just passed in, in front of our own eyes. I don't need anyone to teach my second grader about the range of ways people can express their gender. I don't need anyone teaching my fifth grader about masturbation. I definitely don't need anyone teaching my middle schooler about anal sex and abortion. Schools should leave that up to the parents, their religion, their values, their morals. Focus more on reading, writing, and math. There should be an opt-in policy. I believe you guys have an opt-out policy with certain health topics. But if parents don't know this is happening in schools, how are we supposed to opt out? There should be an opt-in policy for all of those topics. And as for the other policy, sixteen forty-eight point fourteen, I did not see it on your website, but I believe it is treating schools as a healthcare setting. We are not a healthcare setting. Our schools are filled with healthy staff and students. We're not sick patients in a healthcare facility and we should not have the same policies. In closing, I would like to say that as the Board of Education, you have way more power than your lawyer lets you believe. You can table policies and you do not have to comply with everything coming from the state. You can at least try or let us know that you're trying. You're our educational leaders and you need to step it up.
Eli Gallagher?
I had a question. I filed for a religious exemption for a mask, which in, nowhere in the mandate whatsoever, my wife printed the mandate out for me, but nowhere in the executive order two-five-one does it say anything that I can't have a religious exemption for a mask. But Ms. Permili specifically told me that she was told by someone at the state that I'm not allowed to have a religious exemption, which you're not allowed to do by the New Jersey State Constitution, if you didn't know. But I'm going to school you for a second. Give me one sec. Paragraph one says, "All persons are free and independent and have natural and unalienable rights." Paragraph two A says, "All political power is inherent to the people. Government is instituted for the protection, security, and benefit of the people. We have the right to alter or reform at all times, whenever the public good may require it." And number five says, "No person shall be denied or discriminated against in the militia or in the public schools because of religious principles, race, color, ancestry, or national origin." This executive order does not trump that. I don't care what you say. And I would like to know the name of the person who told you this. Because for a week straight, my daughter, Ava Gallagher, sitting right there, was denied a religious exemption for a mask. Okay? And I don't appreciate it whatsoever because I followed all the rules. I wrote it down, signed it, dated it, all week, the week of Thanksgiving. And your principal at Squid Lake Elementary denied her entry and denied her an education for a week. And you forced me to get a medical exemption for her when there ain't nothing wrong with her and put her in a 504 plan when you don't have the right to do so legally by the Constitution of New Jersey, who's more powerful than any of you sitting up here, just to let you know. And more powerful than that governor who thinks he's in charge of something, who works for me, just like you work for me, if you're wondering. I'm good on this. I don't know where you think you get off, just superseding the Constitution of this state, but we're done with that. We're not doing that no more. I suggest that you change your policy because it's going to get the taxpayers of this town in hot water. I guarantee you it will. Have a good night.
Jennifer Gallagher?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start with, are you guys aware that during the governor's COVID briefing yesterday, a question was asked about what would happen should the lawsuit he's involved in be held firm and the mask mandate be lifted? And his response was that if students would have to, they would have to go back to virtual learning. So none of you, not you guys, not the governor, not the Health Office, are giving us any other options but to pull our kids out. You're not listening to what we want for them. All of our efforts and our patience are being stretched thin. Are you all aware that a mandate and an executive order is not a law? It cannot be turned into law without legislative backing and approval. An executive order from a governor is a persuasive suggestion. So this is what you guys have been upholding, a suggestion. You're listening to a fear-mongering politician about what's best for our children instead of hearing cries from concerned parents. Ms. Permili, your job as superintendent by definition is to represent the concerns of the taxpayers, citizens, and parents to the school administrators and to represent the needs of your students. As our representation, you said to me that you don't like the way that the lines are being blurred between politics and education. I kind of disagree because from my opinion, I feel like a lot of bootlicking is going on around here. And I don't feel like you guys are being as honest with us as you claim to be about the terms and conditions that you agree to without our knowledge to get this federal funding for COVID. So you guys are really going to sit there and try and say that there's nothing in there about trying to uphold maximum numbers for masked students, things like that? No? We're just going to pretend like that doesn't exist? Okay. So your funding has been affected due to low enrollment numbers already. So what, what's going to happen to your precious funding when we just pull our kids out because we're sick of talking to ourselves? Right? So basically, what our children really need is someone who still has a backbone, someone who isn't chasing a check, someone who's not afraid to go against the grain and really stand up for their best interests. What our children need is their parents. Because their parents, I'm sorry. They need our, they need our voices to be heard because we are all of those things. We don't have ulterior motives that run parallel with their best interests. You have all lost your way and have strayed from the path you originally chose to take when you entered education. Our children don't come with price tags. Our children don't come with expiration dates like these executive orders, mandates, governors, politicians, superintendents, and board members. And they're certainly not contagions like how they've been treated for the last two years. They are our future and I think that you all need to start treating them with a little bit more respect. I'm not unreasonable. I understand this whole gambit of education will crumble like a house of cards without your precious funding. But what needs to happen now is a conversation, a conversation between this panel and these parents. You need to weigh the pros and cons of accepting- You need to weigh the pros and cons of accepting these bribes on behalf of our babies, that no one ever really discusses the terms and conditions you agree on when you accept the funding. How do we, the people who, mind you, pay exorbitant taxes largely in part for this institution, know that you're not being swayed into agreeing to certain things that we've clearly and loudly voiced objections to? I don't think that you're all being as honest with us as you claim to be. I think there's a lot of backdoor bootlicking going on, and it's not in the name of science, education, health, or safety, and it sure as hell isn't in the name of our children. You have all lost my trust. You could have been a shining beacon of hope for us and for our children, and you let us down, you sold us out, all in the name of money. If these egregious acts of forced masking happened two and a half years ago, prior to this pandemic, that would constitute as child abuse. If a gym teacher forced an entire class of children of any age to perform physical activity, he would be fired and cited as an unfit educator. Which is still going on, by the way, Mr. Rotante, as of yesterday at Switlick Elementary. They're still forcing the children to wear masks. Also, if this would have happened two and a half years ago and a parent was forcing a face covering over their child's face, they would have been investigated by DIFIS and cited as an unfit parent. But now what? This is all suddenly okay and acceptable because we don't want to run the risk of getting the sniffles? You're all unfit decision-makers and problem solvers if you can't see how this is abusive to our children. Children, you chose to take part in their educational careers. So what I'm asking you is what can we do together to do better for our children? Thank you.
This is what I would like to say. Well, at school, every single day, I see people walking around with coverings just over their face, and really, it's sad. They can barely breathe, and just like what my mommy over there with the red hair talked about. Gym is just, 'cause yesterday, I forgot my sneakers, and I had to sit or just stand and watch everybody else play, and I thought they weren't going to wear masks, but they did. And the gym teacher is making them, and it just feels me so heartbroken to see them just running around trying to huff and puff and breathe. Also, we have this chair in the gym, it's called the breathing chair, that all the kids go to to do a mask break, and sometimes that chair gets so piled up, there's such a big line that we have to stop our game, 'cause there's so little people on our team. And I just think that it's impossible to do this, to keep it going for any longer, because either something's going to happen, or you can keep going your way and keep doing this. That, something else I would like to say is that two years ago, or about two years ago, we all had freedom, and we all liked each other and weren't scared. This America was called a free country, but now everyone is always just listening to other people and of what they have to say, not to the kids. Like, last year, when they had a survey for the parents of how they liked the mask, why didn't they put a survey for the kids? 'Cause they should've. 'Cause a lot of people really wanna take their mask off, and they're like, "How'd you put your mask off? How'd you do that exemption? I really want one. I can barely breathe in this." And it also, before I had exemption, it really problemed me to actually listen. I was constantly messing with it and adjusting it, and it was very hard for me. Also, I wore a cloth mask in third grade, and every time I tried to talk, like, my mask got so wet, you could literally soak it out in a sink. Like, and it's not funny. You think it's just going, 'cause you don't have to do this all. It's discriminating, age discriminating, 'cause this only is for the kids. When you walk into Walmart, you don't have to wear anything. When you walk into ShopRite, you don't have to wear anything. So I don't understand, when you go to education, you actually have to wear one of these, and it's really sad, because, like, you never know. Some kids could just fall on the floor and they can't really breathe, while others are just sad. So I think that you should very change it, so it would be a lot better. And also, I got on the news, me and my mom, and I made a poster. So, and we did the shoe thing. So I just think that you should stop all you're doing, just stop playing around and do the real thing. You should start being better and actually listening to the kids, not just listening to yourself and what other people say, because kids should have a say in it. And this is why I'd like to wrap it up. Goodbye.
Think about what you wanna say next time.
James Morgarte?
You know, first and foremost, maybe I was in the bathroom, did we salute the flag before this meeting?
Yes.
We did, okay. Just wanted to make sure, I must've missed it. For the past 30 years, I've worked as an engineer in the high-speed communications industry, and one of the most basic skills is to be able to observe a system and look at it objectively and draw conclusions from what you've seen, and based on concepts and knowledge that the scientific community has accumulated for centuries, and apply that to the real world and come up with a solution. And that solution may not be perfect, but it should at least make sense. And I think part of the reason why there's so much frustration in this room, and quite honestly, I wish there was more attendance in this room, is because nothing makes sense for what you're applying, these rules and these procedures that you're applying with respect to COVID. So my impression is that this system is supposed to be geared toward educating our kids rather than playing politics, and from what I'm hearing, that's all you guys do. I'm sorry, as a body, and I don't know each of you individually, I regret not knowing each of you individually, but you seem to wanna play politics more than educate our kids. And I'm also certain that nothing I say here is gonna make a difference in the minds of any of you, and I, it's a shame. Your mandate-driven protocols have been and will continue to be ineffective. All you've managed to do, as many of the parents have said here, is keep healthy kids away from school and robbing them of classroom time, just because they may have been too close to someone on the bus, five feet instead of six feet, and then parents are left at home to bridge the gap between what they're learning in school and what they could possibly learn at home remotely, which we're happy to do, while you guys continue to push this propaganda-driven protocol that is doing more harm than good for our kids. I teach my kids the truth about this situation, that the data shows that our children are the least likely to experience anything from COVID, but you are pushing mandates that supposedly is supposed to protect them. From what? They're gonna catch COVID, especially Omicron that's coming. It's more contagious than anything, but it's the least intense of them. They're gonna catch it, they're gonna endure it, and they're gonna be stronger for it in the end. And that's the way these things work, and everybody's denying it. This is what I tell my kids, okay? I don't tell them to listen to the school body. As a matter of fact, you guys don't talk health to the kids, okay? The lunches, the free breakfasts and lunches, and I've seen these things, are disgusting. You are teaching them the path to diabetes and obesity, okay? So I don't know why you think these free lunches, my kids ate better when I prepared their lunches. It's disgusting, and I'm sure none of you would eat this stuff. So please, don't offend us by putting that on the board, that lunches are a good thing. It's disgusting. The data continues to show that most of the people affected by COVID are 75 years and older with comorbidities. Our children, 0-17-year-olds, the serious illness slash fatality rate as of today is .08%. Point zero eight. You guys are educators, do you understand that number, how low it is? Again, our children are not at risk. Stop saying or pretending that they are. I tell mine that they're not at risk. Make healthy choices and you'll benefit. Not a single word is being spoken to our kids in school or by the government about healthy, common sense, everyday choices. Instead, they're telling us that masks and injections and shields are the way to protect yourself, when you all know damn well that that is not the case. And if you do think that's the case, then I pity you. I give my kids the choice of wearing the masks. They're wearing their masks, my two kids that are in the school system, not because you tell them or because their teachers tell them, it's because they're making a choice, because they wanna participate in school. Make better choices. Thank you.
Like most parents, I'm also frustrated, we're also frustrated with the continuing of enforcement of the current policy, and I'm sure all of you, most of you up here as well, wish this would go away. But currently, as of today, we're still enforcing the mask and everything else that goes with it. But as I'm listening to some of the other stories and my own kids' stories, it seems like there's a lot of, there's no uniform in the application of the mask policies in the classroom, in the gyms. I mean, I know, thankfully, our gym teacher allows the kids to keep the mask down if they're doing some physical activities, which is great, but then in the classroom, I hear from my daughter where she, they're not allowed to take water breaks, 'cause that counts as a mask break. So you take your, you're allowed to drink water during your, one of the two mask breaks you have in the classroom. So, no water, but you could, which equals a mask break, you know what I mean? It doesn't make sense. Is that, and what is the policy in the classroom for mask breaks, if there is? Is that up to the teacher to make it up arbitrarily, depending on who she is or who he is? So if you could please answer that question after this is over, what is the classroom policy currently for mask breaks, and how long is it each mask break? Who makes it up? Is the teacher the one that can make this up? Should I take this up with her teacher, or will we get an answer today about that? That's it. Thank you.
Jamie Lehman or Lowman?
Good evening. Hi. I don't know how you all can sit up here and listen to these children. I don't. To me, listening to these parents and what they have to say sounds like child abuse in our schools. A single chair for her to sit and breathe? Why aren't you looking into that? I have to say, I think it was the week before Thanksgiving, my child, both my children, were forced to wear a mask in the gym, because on that day, they had to have gym indoors. My daughter comes home very upset, crying her eyes out. You wanna know why? Because they were forced to wear a mask and do laps around the gym. They watched one of their fans pass right out on the floor, face first, pass out. I called the school, I questioned it. Oh, you don't know what the child's underlying conditions are? I don't care at this point. No child needs to be in the McCollough Middle School, running around with a mask on. That's child abuse. Child abuse. And then I had to email the principal, the vice principal, which I'm very friendly with because he's been amazing to my type 1 daughter, and the gym teachers. The only one that acknowledged me was our vice principal. He called me right away. He apologized. Did you know about that? Did you know what happened in McCollough Middle School the week before Thanksgiving? That's traumatizing to other children. Traumatizing. That's more traumatizing than witnessing their best friend, one of their good friends, passing out in front of them? That's traumatizing. I feel like you don't. I watched you, with one in the middle right there, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, roll your eyes when she called the governor a dictator. I don't feel like any of you wanna support us as parents at all, and I will hold you all accountable for that. Thank you.
Madam President, there's no one else on the list.
Thank you. Seeing no one else come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor?
I do plan on responding. I was waiting for the board president to read the statement that says that I'm planning and responding. So I will respond now. Thank you. So yes, I did all along plan on responding. So let me start, I'm gonna go backwards and forwards, because I have my pages of notes. First of all, I want to address the mask-wearing in the gym for physical activity, that is not something that this district has promoted at all, so I will be looking into that in all of our schools. That is not something that we absolutely do not support that. Please just give me an opportunity to speak, as I gave you the opportunity to speak.
No, there's no response. This is the response to the public participation. The board has closed, the board has closed the public participation, so please let Ms. Formelli answer the questions.
So I would like to, Mr. Gallagher, yes, please. I would ask you, I'm always available via phone. Please reach out. Ms. Gallagher, I've spoken to you before via phone, so if there is something that I haven't answered this evening, I am available, please call the office, and I'll be certainly happy to either have a sit-down meeting with you or a phone conversation. I do make myself available. I do wanna just stop for a minute and just pause. I am not a bad person here, folks, and I don't appreciate being attacked that way. I'm a 30-year educator with a lot of experience and care and compassion for students, and to be accused otherwise is quite insulting to me, I have to say. So I'm going to continue with the fact that the single chair to breathe, I was not aware of, and I absolutely will be looking into that. I don't find that acceptable either. I do believe that students should have the availability to have multiple mask breaks. We did put into place in the beginning of the school year and presented publicly on it. It is also in the Road Forward Plan. We encourage multiple mask breaks for our students in the morning and in the afternoon, along with their lunchtime. And if you are having a specific issue with a specific teacher, please do call that teacher, and also the administrator in that building if you need to. Because we have encouraged multiple mask breaks, I will also be looking into the water break counting as a mask break. I also am not in favor of that, and will be looking into that as well. I can't address issues if I don't know them, so again, I encourage people, and many of you have emailed me or called me, but I always ask you to start at the school level first. Again, I care deeply about our students, which is why we continue to advocate for, I forget which parent mentioned it, but we have been advocating, specifically, I have directly emailed the Ocean County Health Department on multiple occasions. Also, most recently, at the Ocean County Superintendent's Roundtable, we've had discussions about advocating again for a change in the guidelines to be more similar to what the yellow category looks like, if you're familiar with that chart, which is a test to return, which would be between five and seven days if a student is not symptomatic, that they have the opportunity to test with a negative test and return to school. So we will continue to advocate for that and continue to have discussions at the board level moving forward with that. We also feel that the 14 days is excessive at this point, and we will continue to discuss The executive order that was put in front of me in regards to the mask-wearing spells out the specific exemptions that are allowed under that executive order. Religious exemption is not listed as one of them, which is why a religious exemption was not permitted. I have checked with other districts, I have checked with attorneys. So Mr. Gallagher, that is where I received my information on that. I understand, I heard what you presented to me.
Sir, this is not a back-and-forth debate. Can you please let Ms., yeah, well, you don't seem to want to follow the rules.
I'm going to, Mr. Gallagher, again, you can call me. I will have, you know I will call you back. I will have a conversation with you. Again, in regards to the, in regards to the health curriculum, I know you had spoken in regards to that. That is, as you know, state standards that were required to follow, but I will let you know in our district currently, we will not be, we're not implementing that because the, at this point, because we are waiting for resources. We have been told that the Department of Ed is supposed to provide us resources because this is a very, these are very difficult topics, as you had mentioned, to instruct on, and we need to see what the guidance is from them before we move forward. And then we will be reviewing them and determine how we approach those. Ms. LaCitra, did you want to add anything to that? I know you've been working on it.
Yes, the bill that you were referring to as far as the health is 4454, and that is not in the Jackson curriculum at this time. We are aware of what it contains. However, as Ms. Permelli just said, we are still waiting for resources from the commissioner, which we have not yet received. When and if we do receive those resources, we will be able to provide more information. But just rest assured, those topics are not in our curriculum at this time. Yes, once we get that information, that is our plan. We will be able to provide parents with more information as to what is in there. But if you have any questions specifically, please feel free to contact me at any time, and I can go over all of that with you.
Thank you, Ms. LaCitra. I was just going to say that any questions can certainly be addressed right to Mrs. LaCitra, she's been answering them all along. In regards to Mr. Grossheller, who spoke about special education students and programming, by all means, we are, we have plans. Dr. Taylor is getting ready to launch something very early in January to address some of our special education needs that we see. So we are aware and agree, we need to continue to support all students. Just give me a moment to see if there was something else I needed to comment on. In regards to the policy for healthcare settings, unfortunately, again, that comes from a law that was passed and from the Department of Education in regards to healthcare settings. I really think the intent of the law was for hospitals, doctors' offices, and things like that. Unfortunately, sometimes when these broad-brush laws get put into place, they forget about a school system, and technically, our health offices fall under that. So we did do a very broad policy in regards to the protocols that we have in place in our health office for COVID, and it very much fits with exactly what we've always done in regard to if somebody comes in symptomatic. And again, if there's any further questions on that, please feel free to reach out to me. I have to just, and, you know, I don't want to engage in arguments, but I do need to say that chasing a check is extremely insulting. And I know you don't agree with me, that's fine, but again, a 30-year educator who has dedicated her life to students, I find that insulting. With that, I close. I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, Ms. Permelli. Board comments, Mr. Spolzhov.
I just want to thank the board for welcoming me back in March. Disappointed that this ends my short term here. I want to make sure that the new board members coming in and the current board members, that when we make decisions, that we think about all of our students and that we include all of our students, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, that every kid in this district matters, and every kid in this district is important. I interviewed amongst a lot of people for this position because I have three kids and because I wanted to make sure that the quality of education that I had seen to date continues. I'm confident in the new board members that were elected, and I'm not leaving. I'll be around. So thank you for your time, and thank you for the community, for your support. It certainly has not been an easy time to be in education. Thank you.
Mr. Acevedo.
I would like to have something answered, a point of information, before I go to my statements. It's a question I've asked of the Assistant Superintendent, but I'm not sure that I was satisfied with the answer. On October 19th, three schools, two middle schools, two high schools, on the same day, had high levels of out-of-school suspensions. And could someone please, if they can remember, why there was such a trend? That there were three, five here, and then high numbers on that particular day? What happened?
Mr. Acevedo, we really are not at liberty to discuss confidential-
That's not part of-
Let me finish, please. We're not allowed to discuss confidential student matters in public. I don't know the answer to the question, but I think we have to tread carefully on this.
I was just waiting for Mr. Acevedo to finish. But, Mr. Acevedo, yes, listen, you know, our attorney is absolutely correct. We can't talk about student issues. However, we can get, call you and give you information to, as a general overview of, you know, the cause of the suspensions. So let us look into it and get back to you.
Okay, because it's a negative trend, and it was made public, the amount, the numbers were made public, but the answer that I, to the question I asked was not satisfactory. And I would appreciate, as a citizen, that I will be, when I leave here, an answer to that. Thank you. Now, as a board member, I think back to the play Hamilton, where one of the characters sings, "I want to be in the room where it happens." When you're a board member, you know things you didn't know until you became a board member. And you're in the room where it happens, and you have a decision to make or not to make according to what you know, what you feel, but you also try to set aside your own biases, your own prejudices, your own leanings. The thing is that I hope that the new board that will take over will be as open as they promised to be when they went for votes, because I will support that. I will support them 100% as a citizen, as a resident, as a voter. However, the negativity that we've had here is not new to me. I was really on the board 23 years, four years on the vocational, 30 years as a teacher, five times as a president, 10 times as president of the curriculum board, created curriculum. And the thing is, people who never came here, voted for me, voted for me or against me, for John or against him, show up. Show up. It's your town. The heart of the town, the heart of the town is usually the church or the school. The church or the school. If I may, I don't want to, no polemics, no discussions, I just want you to know that-
I just want to talk to Adam.
I, it's my time to turn. I'm leaving here after 25 years. Thank God. I had-
All right, if I could please just ask the audience to refrain from shouting out.
I'm not finished yet. This building had hundreds of parents picketing that it shouldn't be built. The tennis courts, it should not be built. The new middle school, it shouldn't be built. The Liberty School, don't build it. Everything, the lights for the football field, don't build them, don't construct them. There were, no, they were sure that they should, that should not happen. And you know what? Instructed, informed parents and board members and citizens decided that this school is going to go forward. We are, in existence, not only to end ignorance, we can't end ignorance, but to provide opportunity for children, for adults, for people who are going to know more and be better at what they do because they know more. This school district has to stay courageous and visionary and fearless, not close-minded, not close-eared, not close-eyed. However, if you think that being loud, being rude, and being right about your opinion makes you right, think about it. We all have an opinion. My opinion is worthless because it's an opinion, okay? What I know is about facts, knowledge, proof. What makes a school work is not emotion, it's knowledge, it's wisdom, it's information. I ask everybody to realize how good a superintendent we have. She took over at a time when things were turned upside down, and she turned them back up. We had board members who took over when there were gaps, and they jumped in immediately, John, one of them. Okay? The school district is not against children. My son went to school here, my daughter went to school here, my nephews went to school, I went to school here. We care about the children. My daughter, National Honor Society, my son, special ed after a car accident. Both matter. The parent who said be concerned about special ed children, that's the kind of thing we have to discuss. The other stuff is stuff. It's just stuff. You know what? We are not doctors, we are not experts on medicine, but I know, I was in a hospital where I saw children die of COVID, months ago, of COVID. Called me a liar, you don't know, I don't know you.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Education listened respectfully and quietly while the public spoke. We ask that you please stop interrupting the meeting, and if you're going to continue to interrupt the meeting, we're going to ask security to have you escorted from the room. Okay?
I will end with this. I was in the hospital for a gallbladder operation. I heard the children crying, I saw their litters taken out, and I saw that, how much they needed the room because the entire hospital was full of people. They didn't have enough beds. People, if you hurt a child, their lungs are affected, they can't be athletes, they can't blow the horn, they can't sing, they can't run track. Never mind that they don't die, their scholarships are affected, and if you don't like what I say, well, you're not supposed to like it if you disagree with it, but think about it. Bye.
Mr. Brineski.
Sorry. Okay. Tonight is my final Board of Ed meeting. I chose not to run this year, as life tends to get in the way sometimes, and unfortunately, I have no time for it any longer. So this is a bittersweet night for me. It has been an honor and a privilege for me to serve with the people of this, to serve the people of this town and serve with some great people on this board. I thank the people of Jackson for supporting me these last six years. I have certainly learned a lot. You have a very hard-working staff here, including teachers, transportation, buildings and grounds, custodial and security, as well as a transparent administration that has always answered any question I've ever had. I leave the board confident in the way ahead, hopeful that I've helped in some small way. And I say good luck to the, all the incoming members, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you guys.
Mr. Walsh.
I'd like to thank Mr. Acevedo, Mr. Brineski, Mr. Herman, Mr. Spolzhov. When you develop relationships and you have friendships with different people, if you can learn from them, it was worthwhile, and I've learned from all four of them. Thank you, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, your input and concerns. Thank you, Ms. Permelli and staff, for your continuous dedication.
Mr. Spolzhov, I want to thank you for your service, dedication, expertise, your insight, along with anytime I asked you to, you know, to step up, your commitment, and I appreciate that. Mr. Herman, I thank you for your service and your unique perspective and your willingness to serve. Mr. Acevedo, I appreciate your teamwork, your 20 years of experience of service, and your wisdom. And Mr. Brineski, I sincerely appreciate your service, your parent liaison, and your six years of service. Each and every one of you brings their unique perspective, and you're respectful, you're transparent viewpoints, and actively listening during the school year. I know each and every one of you of the board care about education and your students. Happy holidays and good night. I need a motion to adjourn by acclamation.
Motion.
Acclamation.
Second.
By acclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?[1671.61]